Welcome. Smithfield Town Council meeting, and it is April Fools today. So I want you to understand that this is not a joke right here. We've got to carry on the business of the town, and I appreciate y'all coming. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of the flag.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have the manager's report.
Yes, sir. Included in your packet was the activity report for the previous month as well as the summary reports from the committee meetings. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Hearing none at this time, we have public comments. We've got six people signed up. Robert Smith?
It's Robert Small.
Small, I'm sorry.
That's right. Handwriting's terrible. It's on the flagged property. I just had to speak on it now or later.
You can speak on it when we get to that, that'd be fine.
That'd be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate being here.
Eric Lehman?
Good evening, everyone. I want to talk a little bit tonight about growth. The novelist William Burroughs famously wrote, "When you stop growing, you start dying," emphasizing that there is no such thing as staying the same. There's only continuous growth or continuous decline. Excuse me. As that principle applies to small towns, a fellow named Edward McMahon, an authority on sustainable development, land conservation, and urban design, said, "Growth is inevitable and desirable, but the destruction of community character is not. The question is not whether your part of the world is going to change; the question is how is it going to change?" Across America, small towns like Smithfield face a really delicate balance of welcoming new and returning residents and businesses while preserving their character, their resources, their infrastructure. And frankly, those who adopt a no-growth stance are condemning their towns to eventual and assured decline. It's essential, therefore, that the leadership and citizens of Smithfield recognize that striking the proper balance between population growth and business development and no-growth is critical for preserving the town's charm, its sustainability, and its future prosperity. You know, why am I stating what I think should be obvious for everybody? Because I want to make sure that this council isn't more no-growth than proper growth. During last year's election, a slate of four candidates framed their campaign on a shared platform of reining in growth in Smithfield, stating they were opposed to high-density housing projects to preserve Smithfield's small-town character. That statement, to me and many others, presented a negative and narrow perspective. Many would have preferred to hear from candidates, and what I believe we need from both candidates and this council and the leadership is a forward-thinking approach, one such as, "I support well-planned housing and new business that align with Smithfield's small-town character while meeting the needs of our growing community." Positive and negative have a real impact. The Smithfield Town Council has both the opportunity and the obligation to shape the town's future in a way that balances preservation with progress through a sensible growth. This is the only way to enhance Smithfield's economic opportunities, its infrastructure, and the quality of life while maintaining the town's historical charm, cultural identity, and the sense of community that we all in this room feel. Specifically, constantly opposing any growth is naive, very naive. It fosters a mindset of resistance to change which discourages innovation and civic engagement. We all have to remember that good can always be better, and we can always be better, and our town can. Like all small towns, Smithfield relies on new and old businesses, infrastructure projects, and residential development to create jobs, generate tax income, and attract investment. The town risks economic stagnation if every proposal faces negativity and resistance, and new residents and businesses are often or sometimes made to feel unwelcome. Without responsible growth, Smithfield's revenue streams will shrink or at best remain limited. This can lead to higher taxes on residents to maintain services rather than spreading costs among the growing population and business base.
One minute.
Rejecting or limiting reasonable proposals results in missed opportunities to improve the quality of life for all of us. Like many small towns, Smithfield struggles with a lack of affordable housing. Blocking growth initiatives exasperates housing shortages across all income levels, limiting options for younger generations, and leads to deteriorating infrastructure. Finally, and most disastrously for a lot of reasons, businesses and investors will move their plans elsewhere if the town develops a reputation for being hostile to sound financial growth and development. This will limit local job creation, reduce commercial opportunities, and leave Smithfield lagging in competitive, in its competitive nature, with other local towns. Enclosing growth is not something to be feared but welcomed and shaped with care and vision and community input. Focusing on well-planned development that aligns with Smithfield's character can strengthen our local economy, enhance infrastructure, and ensure a vibrant future. Together, we as citizens in a council can cultivate a thriving Smithfield, not just one that survives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Next is Lee Abbott Lehman.
Lee Abbott Lehman, 111 Thomas Street. At the March 4 Town Council meeting in relation to the text amendment that was presented or proposed, Vice Mayor Harris, you mentioned that you felt it was an obligation of yours to make sure the historic district stays as it is. It was clear you were fairly conflicted during some of the discussion and the conversation, either for setting precedent or because it was Mr. Corolo, I'm not sure. Councilman Cutler, you cited that citizens are very knowledgeable and understand the zoning ordinances and the decisions followed. That's 100% correct, and it's precisely why I'm here this evening. You asked that the council members not besmirch our intelligence by arguing against zoning and, basically, I respect that you asked that they don't besmirch our intelligence. But part of the problem is that you're besmirching our neighborhood format that several of you actually chose to move into, and I don't know that that's really that clear. It was pretty clear during the conversation how disconnected some people's understanding of what downtown is in a density scenario. In speaking on Mr. Corolo's behalf, Mr. Hopke reported that the five-unit-per-acre maximum made it impossible to replicate existing historic residential fabric, character, and scale. He's 100% correct, because five is artificially low in our context. Town personnel would be best suited to provide these accurate details, but I didn't want to contact them after they were chastised in a public forum last month for proactively researching the information. Vice Mayor, you asked if research was done on Grace, Clay, or James as a representation of what we want to see replicated. Armed with Google Maps, Realtor.com, and a highly energetic Labrador puppy to walk the neighborhoods, I did some of those counts. These are going to be low-ball, I estimated, lower in all areas, just to be on the safe side. I think five, five an acre would do a great job of creating an Epcot version of Smithfield, but not the town that we actually live in, and I ask you to retain that integrity. As a sampling, South Church Street from the park up towards the Glotney House, nine. Long-established streets off of Cedar, nine, and 11, and I'm not talking about the apartments. Drive over across Main and Grace onto Cary, you're over nine. Stop by the blocks on the site that was discussed, Washington, there's five or six in some stretches, but there's also 10, and nearly 10 on Riverview, in keeping with that amendment. The question was raised about two-story duplexes and whether they fit in the district. That's kind of surprising, because I live two doors down from a two-unit home. There are several on the residential stretch on South Church Street that we all talk about wanting to preserve. You pass them on the historic walking tours. Do they not fit in, or is it that they actually blend in so well with the fabric of downtown that we don't notice them? Earlier this year, you approved updated B-hard guidelines. You therefore will have read the guidelines, "Don't preserve a colonial charm in a town of the wide, leafyest lots. We're so much more than that. The guidelines help to manage improvement outcomes for an area beginning in the colonial era through 10 different architectural eras spanning over nearly 300 years." That amendment institutes, as Mr. Hopke pointed out, excuse me, the five-per-acre constitutes downzoning, and that has really dangerous consequences. Downzoning creates a massive carrot to low-density builders to maximize their returns in developing larger homes. The documented knock-on effects are widening an already-large housing gap, contributing to much or more, actually, school and traffic growth. Such standards would also dwarf and diminish our current homes and reduce their property values. Thanks, but no thanks. I think it's time to think beyond the five-an acre in the downtown. In inevitability, only Murphy's Law could trump the law of unintended consequences set in motion. I'm not quite sure what you all think you bought into when moving downtown, but please, don't change the historic district while trying to preserve it under an incorrect impression. It's not Cypress Creek. It's not the waterfront lots of Goose Hill. Everyone's so concerned that it's going to look like Suffolk's Bridgeport, but you're actually in a backhanded way incentivizing builds for the most affluent cookie-cutter homes bursting on their lots like if overrun Chesapeake. I don't think we want that. You were elected to preserve Smithfield, not actively reshape and empower its gentrification. Please maintain the district and its density as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. Next is Bob Lavingood.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Bob, Mr. Lavingood called me earlier today. He's here to speak as well on the property issue, so if you want to hear from him in the public comments, or if you would rather hear, it's totally up to the chair, I'm sure, but I'm sure that's what he's going to speak to. So I just throw that out for what it's worth after he contacted me this morning.
I think you can go ahead and speak, Bob, and if you want to stick around and speak later, that'd be fine, too.
Okay. The blighted property in question, I own the house next to it, it's 1504 McGruder. When the house burned, it's been over five months now, and I've been a pretty good neighbor about it. Nothing's been touched since the day of the fire. But more importantly, I called the town of Smithfield, talked to Joseph Reisch about it after it'd been two or three months, and we see no activity, nothing being done, and I have also had, in case y'all don't have them, here's a, here's your own, you guys, of exactly what it looks like, see if anybody might want to live next door. So anyway, we took the pictures of the house, we waited, we waited for two or three months. I talked to Joseph Reisch about it. He sent me out to the county, told me to call Mark Drumheller. I called Mark Drumheller. He didn't know what I was talking about, and he said he had nothing to do with it. So he sent me back to the county. Took me two or three calls to get a hold of him, called the town manager three different occasions, left him voice messages, didn't get a call back ironically till today. And Joseph Reisch showed up at the property today, at my son's house, which is in my name, showed up at the property today, which was kind of ironic. But I've been trying to get up with the town on this for the last month and a half, two months, to no avail. And it's not just the house has burned. For probably 10 years now, since the house hadn't been lived in, it's a swimming pool in the backyard with no fence. It has water in it. Little kids ride over there all the time. My son tried to get some pictures, but he just doesn't catch them at the right time, looking at the house, the part that hadn't fallen down. And so it's a hazard, it's been a hazard for over five months. We're trying to be a good neighbor, but I think five months is the right long time for that house to sit there in the condition it is for the pool. And I can tell you, when we built the house, I'm a marine contractor by trade, and I cleared the brush, not cut any trees in the RPA, cleared the brush with what's called a power rake. Joseph wrote me up. I had to plant $2,600 worth of plants in the middle of some thicket and some stuff that we didn't, in the RPA line. But he told me that he didn't have no authority to do anything about it. So if that is the case, and he's our codes and compliance, I mean, maybe we got some cuts here in the town that we can make. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lavingood. Next, we have Judy Ull.
Good evening. I'm Judy Ull. My daughter and I are vendors at the Smithfield Farmers Market. I was here in December talking to you about the proposed project to have a new home for the farmers market, and I'm still here in support of that and would love to see a permanent home. And in my remarks in December, I mentioned that we only had a year-to-year lease on our parking lot situation at the bank, south side of Virginia, and we did not know what the future held for that. Little did I know we would lose that lease so quickly that we are now faced the situation of, this is our last year in that location, and we have to find somewhere to go. I serve on the board of the farmers market, have for a number of years, and I won't go through what I had said last time I came about the problems with our current location, but I will say that we had a board meeting on Thursday, and the process of just brainstorming, where can we go, has started, because we have to find somewhere that can accommodate the market starting next April. About 10 ideas, I guess, had come up that we kicked around and discussed and talked about, and I have to say, every single one of them is a worse location than where we are now. Some of them are a little bit outside of the downtown Main Street area. We have some amenities there in that parking lot for like electricity and water, and the restroom's over by the ice cream shop that we would not have in other locations that we need. We would lose that connection to Main Street and the businesses there. So I'm, I am more concerned, now I'm concerned about having a new location that's permanent so we wouldn't be kicked around like this. I still would like to see that happen. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to have a world-class farmers market location here, and I would love to see that. But my more immediate concern now is where we're going to go in the meantime. I have this fear that we're going to end up stuck in a parking lot somewhere with a couple of porta-potties and call it a day. And I've been a vendor at the farmers market, starting, this is my 13th year, but the market has been there for more than 20. It has been very successful, creates a lot of revenue for the town, brings a lot of visitors in, it brings a lot of people into the Main Street businesses, restaurants, at very little cost to the town, because the market is designed to be self-sustaining. The vendor fees that we pay and the sponsorships pay for the market, so it's kind of a freebie for the town that generates all of this revenue and business, visitors, all of that. And I have this fear now that that's just going to be allowed to just fizzle away because we don't have a home. We're going to be homeless here coming up next year if we don't find a solution. So I'm alarmed about that. I would hate to see us lose that. I think the town would hate to see us lose that. I can imagine the Main Street businesses would hate to see us lose that. So I would just like to encourage two things, that you give a good amount of consideration to the project that is proposed down for the end of Main Street that would provide a home for the farmers market. If we had a permanent home, we would have so much more flexibility to offer more things at more times, not have to worry about our lease getting terminated. But if you would also provide some assistance as we go about this process of trying to locate a
One minute.
... place for next year that we can continue to operate, at least doing as well as we are now, and not face a setback of having a worse location than what we're in right now. And I'll also say that Saturday is our opening day, and y'all are invited to come down to visit us at the farmers market. We'll be there from 9:00 to 12:00. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next, we have Carrie Robertson.
Good evening, council members. I'm just here to add on to what Ms. Judy was saying this evening. My name is Carrie Robertson. I'm of Suffolk, Virginia, and I am the owner of Peanut City Candle Company, and I'm here to speak in support of the Grange Project. I have participated as a vendor at Smithfield Farmers Market for the past five years. Like many other small businesses that have made their way through the Smithfield Farmers Market incubator, I owe a vast majority of the success of my small business to the town of Smithfield and to this farmers market. I will always claim that Peanut City Candle Company would not exist if it were not for the Smithfield Farmers Market. I have had the pleasure of participating with several fine farmers markets and events over the course of my five years in business, and I can tell you all with great assurance that what the town of Smithfield has here is something very special, and that is because the town of Smithfield is very special. There are no other small towns that I can think of within a 50-mile radius that possess the charm, the cleanliness, and the reputation that Smithfield has. It should be, it should be considered a feather in the local government's cap, that the small businesses that exist along Main Street are staples of a community. They have existed for great lengths of time. There is very little turnaround when it comes to your local businesses, and that is due to two things. The correct, the correct support from the town government and its citizens, and its citizens. Downtown Suffolk would do itself a service to take some notes from you all. The farmers market is a well-known and well-loved staple within this community of Smithfield. Are any of you aware that Smithfield Farmers Market was voted in the top 101 farmers markets in North America? Are you all aware of that? Fantastic.
Yes, we are.
Fantastic. Well, that might not seem like a very exciting number to some people, but you have to consider that that is counted against 8,400 farmers markets across this great country. That number is just what the USDA has recorded. We know that there's probably hundreds more pirate farmers markets popping up all over the place. In 2026, this market is going to lose its lease for the location that has served it best. As an active member on the advisory board for the farmers market, I can tell you all two things. Number one, that we are actively looking for a suitable relocation that will be both convenient for our patrons and allow us to continue our symbiotic relationship with the downtown businesses of Main Street. And number two, that none of the options are at all ideal. I don't want to be a Debbie Downer here, but I'm a businesswoman, and I realize that the failure of the local government and its citizens to secure a permanent home for the farmers market will mean its death, and I'm so sorry, but there's no way around that. Our world today is a weird one. We are wired to consume convenience. At every turn, our trees are being mowed down and our fields are being paved to feed some machine, I don't know what it is. The experience of downtown Smithfield, however, does show us that when the option is alive to spend time in community and to engage in a way that recalls a simpler life, people relish it. They support it. The option to access as many local farms and businesses needs to continue to exist because the world still wants to feel connected to its communities. Small towns and farmers markets are what we need to keep us present and human.
One minute.
Not more chain grocery stores. The decision to provide a permanent home for the farmers market and more small locally-owned businesses will help keep the community together. Now, I'm going to hit y'all with some quick facts, and then I'm going to get out of your hair, see if I can do it in a minute. Farmers markets stimulate the local economy. They provide jobs and support wages, most notably for women and minority-owned businesses. 63% of small businesses that participate in farmers markets fall into a minority demographic. Farmers markets support healthy communities, both from a nutritional and a mental health standpoint. I can promise you this, no one at a farmers market is having a bad time, especially not me. Research shows that one can expect to have 15 to 20 positive social interactions at a market versus one to two at a grocery store. And I don't know about y'all, but most of mine are not positive at the grocery store. Farmers markets increase access to fresh food and at a better price. There's less of a carbon footprint for food grown locally because it hasn't traveled all over the country to get to its customers, and it hasn't been taxed to death before it gets to the customer, hence the better prices.
Your time has expired.
Most importantly, farmers markets help preserve rural livelihoods and farmland. We lose 175 acres of farmland every hour due to development. In the last five years, we've lost 140,000 farms across our country from the USDA Census report. In an area where we are still largely farmland and agriculture-based, failure to support your farmers market feels like shots fired. Please consider my words as you make your decision on the future of our market. Thank you all so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. At this time, we have council comments. Anyone like to speak, council? Hearing none. We'll move to the consent agenda, and we have invoices over $20,000. Jeff?
You got a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we do. Resolution, this is Mr. Harris. Sorry, Bill. Have a resolution.
Yes, I'd like to move that we empower the town manager to proceed with the joint operation with the monies provided by Historic Smithfield.
Second.
We have a motion?
That includes the appropriation of the funds, correct?
Correct. We have a motion and a second.
We can go with the invoices?
Pardon?
This is part of the consent agenda?
Right, that's right. You're right. It's already been, already been approved.
No, no, one second. This is item C1. Item C2 is going to be, you need to deal with
We need a motion for that?
No. Your finance chairman needs to go over the invoices, and then you'll vote on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, you're up now.
I just happened to have some invoices over $20,000. First one, we have one for Lewis Construction for $23,000, even for the project back in Red Point. And then secondly, we have one for $32,954 for Tri-State Utilities for sewer lines. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Call for the question, please.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bieber-Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Next, we move to the action section. We have a public hearing on 803 South Church. Tammy, Clarice?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. As part of the applicant's special use permit comprehensive plan amendment and official zoning map amendment applications back in April of 2020, the applicants provided a phasing plan that indicated they would connect to town water by June of 2022 and install driveway improvements by June of 2022. They also received additional ECO approvals as well as special use permits conditioned on them paving the parking lot and connecting to town water. At the Tuesday, October 2, 2024, Town Council meeting, the Town Council did grant an SUP for a waiver of the parking and loading requirements. This would allow that gravel parking area, provided that the applicants returned with an SUP request for a private structure connected to a private well. At the February 11 Planning Commission meeting, this application was unfavorably recommended to Town Council with two dissenting votes. Town staff do recommend that Town Council deny Town staff do recommend that Town Council deny this application for a private well connection as it is in conflict with our town code and current town design standards. The applicants have received multiple SUPs and approvals contingent on them connecting to Town Water. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clarice. I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone like to speak on this matter at this time? No one wants to speak on this? Yeah, please come forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tim Ryan, 11220 Shelter Co., Smithfield, Virginia.
Nick Hess, 223 South Church Street, Smithfield, Virginia.
So a quick recap. I know a lot of you all have heard this story a number of times, since we've had to tell it a few times, but just a quick recap for the group, since I know there's some new members. We're asking for a relief from our commitment to connect to Town Water as put in the zoning application of December 2nd, 2019. And the reason for that is, when we applied in 2019, actually, Nick did the zoning application, we were told by the town planner at the time, John Settle, that in order to be compliant with the town guidelines, that we had to connect to Town Water, pave the parking lot, and a number of other things. So we put that in, the zoning application, as a phase plan, as Ms. Clarice pointed out. We've since learned that we actually don't have to connect to Town Water to be compliant with the code. That's the first thing. The second is, when we said yes to that, that we didn't know how much the connection was going to cost. There were a number of different options at the time, connecting to the animal hospital line, next door, et cetera, et cetera. We're all out there. The third part is, is that the town said that they were going to have the bike path in front of our building, which would have caused the town to purchase part of the property, and we thought that that would offset the cost of the water pipe plus the parking lot if we ended up having to do that. The fourth part of this, and we've since learned that that cost is over $30,000 to hook to water, and that that $30,000 water connection brings absolutely zero to the business. It doesn't help us in any way at all. It doesn't make us have more seating, more parking lot, more anything. It's just an absolute throwaway of $30,000. We already have water. We don't need water. And the economic impact on a small business, for those who have never been in the restaurant business, it's not a get rich or a get rich ever, or get anything ever. It's that $30,000 would have been 40% of our 2023 profits. It would have been 100% of our profits last year with the bridge closure that wiped us out. So if you can imagine having to come out of pocket $30,000 for a water pipe that you don't need, you can see the predicament that we're in. So as a quick summary of that, since mostly of you all have heard this ad nauseam, what we're asking for is relief from the agreement that we put forth in 2019 to connect to Town Water as small business owners to be able to move forward and to survive as a small business. And with that, subject to your questions.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else like to speak on this matter?
I would say, say, Mayor, if you don't mind. You know, when we first started this project, again, like Tim said, you know, if it's a water connection, you know, we thought would be, you know, $5,000, $6,000, simple, which turned into 30,000. Not saying that we didn't say we would do it. You know, what we're really asking for is, hey, we're a small business. We're, yes, have we sold the business. We still own the building. We're still involved in the brewing. We are still there. It's our building. We want to make it right and continue for a success of Red Point so Red Point can bring tax revenue to the town. I feel like we've done that in the startup. There was really no reason to us leave Red Point other than we liked our nights, weekends, and holidays and to see our family. If you guys know the restaurant business, that's something you don't see very often, is your family. So that was our reason on moving. Like, again, we still own the property, and we would like to see Red Point continue to succeed in the area it is. And with a $30,000 connection, it just will not, with the small profit margin of the small restaurant. That's all I have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Time for questions, or?
Yeah. And we'll close the public hearing at this time, yeah. They've already spoke. Thank you for coming forward, guys.
Thank you.
Now, close the public hearing?
We might want to ask you some more questions.
I yield to the council, lady. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, thank you for coming tonight. Just got some information on your, from the town today, on your package that was originally you applied for. Started in December of 2019, looked like it was, obviously, things take a couple months, so the final letter that I saw was from April of 2020. So I don't know about, well, I know what you guys were doing in April 2020. You were opening up a business. The rest of us, well, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, myself, I was sitting at home because that was the beginning of the pandemic. So first of all, I'd like to give you guys credit for opening up a business at the beginning of a pandemic, and when a lot of businesses were closing, you guys ran towards it. So some people may call that foolish or whatever. I call it brave. I call it courageous and innovative. So thank you. I appreciate the amount of work that you've put in on that business and really making it a go-to place in Smithfield. I think it's important for us as a council to support small businesses and especially in the light of the last five years. I don't think anybody went into this thinking, hey, let's spend $30,000 on water. I know you didn't think it was going to be that much. I'm sure the town didn't think it was going to be that much either. So in that sense, I think it behooves us to support, continue supporting you, the fact that you went through a pandemic, which a lot of restaurants did not survive the pandemic, and now you're surviving a bridge closure right in front of you. So at this point, you know, I think it is important for us as a council to support the small businesses in Smithfield, and we appreciate this kind of innovation that you all have provided. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Bowman?
Just a couple of questions. Number one, you did clarify that you didn't, I think the last time you were here, you had indicated that in order to hook up to the water, it would basically cause you to go out of business.
Yes. You had to buy an extra $30,000 just to do that.
Right. Since that time, you had readily admitted that you have sold that business.
Yes.
So the fact that the bridge closure, as Councilwoman Biebermeyer just brought up, that has no impact on your business because it's not yours anymore. But Tim, and what I'm getting to is, you were very, very direct with the council when you said, if y'all adopt this, it's going to kill this business. It's going to put me out, put me out of business, I think was the exact word you said. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Since that period of time, you've?
We have two different, two different companies, yeah. So one owns, one was owned the restaurant business, and the other owns the property.
Okay. The first document that Nick, Mr. Hess, and Mr. Joyner provided said that, it's a couple of things. Once rezoning is complete, we would like to add an outdoor patio by 9/1 of 2020. We would like. The next says, we will hook up to the town of Smithfield Water by 6/1, 2022. And then the third item was, we would like to add our parking lot improvements by 6/1. Can you explain to me why in certain scenarios you said, we would like to, and then another scenario or another sentence you say, we will do that? I mean, it sounds to me like you had either reasonable certainty that you would do that all the way back in 2022. Just can you clarify that for me?
I absolutely can. To say that, to say that those are our words?
Yes, sir. This is your application.
I get that 100%, Mr. Bowman. That, those words, so I can show you the emails back and forth, us and John Settle, and every time I would send something in, he would reply with, no, you need to word this like this, every single time. So all the words got changed back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. So that is a 100%. I have the email trail on all of that, sir.
Okay. Well, I wish I had seen that because I asked for the entire package today. Going back to the cost.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Biebermeyer had indicated that you had no way of knowing what the cost would be. I do have a difficult time understanding astute businessmen going into a business proposition without having an idea of what it would cost, some type of idea. But isn't it true that the cost was going to be around $60,000 or $70,000, and then the town came to the assistance and was able to provide you a method to reduce that price down to the $30,000?
So.
Well, help me out on that.
I can help you out on that. So your price was to bring the water across the street. That was nothing else. That wasn't my meter. That wasn't getting it to the building. That was none of those things.
Okay.
So that's what we'll incur the other cost. In the beginning, the town, who was in Public Works, came out numerous times to the site because during COVID, nothing was moving fast. They're like, oh, yeah, no worries. You can connect right here to Animal Hospital, not knowing the right answer.
Who said that?
Uh, man, I coach his son in baseball, his grandson, Slava, but that's his daughter's name. I can't.
Okay.
Yeah, either way, though.
Thank you.
Yes. But, so, you know, I don't work for Public Works. I'm like, oh, cool. We can just, you know, we already got it across the street? Perfect. We're there. So, I mean, never would have imagined that it was going to run in that area, so.
Okay.
But we also knew based upon what the town had paid for other parcels of land in the other part of the bike path that goes out. That we were, you know, I'd say we knew. We had a general idea. We didn't know what it was going to cost. We figured, hey, well, you know, I mean, you're trying to solve 1,000 problems at that point. I don't even know how much a, you know, a gas stove is going to cost in a restaurant at that point. But we thought that the town purchase of the property in front of our building would offset whatever it was going to cost us. And again, you're rolling the dice at that point. There was a lot of problems to solve, and that wasn't the closest alligator to the boat at that time.
That was also the other reason for the temporary garden in front, because we weren't going to put a permit because they were just going to wipe all that anyway, so we weren't going to waste all that money to rehab all of that.
Just as a matter of full disclosure, I've frequented that facility many, many times and love the food and love the hospitality. The only thing that concerns me is, we've had some discussions before about consistency in application. It just is a little concerning to me, and we talked about precedents. We talked about things such as that. It just concerns me as, okay, if we do this now, where do we end up with the next entity? And I welcome y'all to help me out with this one, if you would. The next entity similarly situated, how do we handle that scenario? What do we do then? Our oath basically is to, basically dutifully and faithfully and without bias, what's the term, Bill?
Impartially.
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 Discharge our duties as a member of council. That's the thing, that's the issue that I'm worried about. There are times where we want to do certain things. We really want to do, and everybody always wants to do the right thing, but it calls into question when you're dealing with regulation and rules, what is the right thing? That's where I'm a little conflicted as far as this specific request is concerned. So I'll leave it at that, and I may have a follow-up, but I'm finished at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, gentlemen, once again.
Well, Mayor, if you don't mind, so this business, this building that we have has been a commercial since 1929. And Town Water was not brought until 1969. So this whole property that we're on was annexed in 1966 to be on that well for those whole seven houses, six homes and that business. This business has never changed from a business. It's never been a dwelling. It's never been nothing but a business. So the only reason we had to come before rezoning was because the business had closed for 30 days consecutive, so which meant rezoning, which I think that's something that needs to be changed. It's, let's put some, you know, common sense to it. It's been a business since 1929, so all of a sudden, it's not a business anymore because it closed because of COVID. So we went out and took the gamble, which I appreciate that, Ms. Biebermeyer, on that, but that's where that came from. And Mr. Riddick may be able to speak more towards the annex of it in '66 until Town Water got there, but all of those homes have a water to supply that is works, it's fine. So, you know, again, yes, did we say we'll connect? But at the same time, I'd like to have some logic in this and save a small business, and let's continue on with this. So I ask that, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow up the staff, please?
Yes, please.
Ms. Clarice? Is that true that had it not closed for that 30 days, or is there more to this than meets the proverbial eye? Because I want a clear understanding on that.
So it was zone residential office. Eating establishments are not a permitted use in the residential office zoning district, so it did need to be rezoned to the HRC in order to permit eating establishments.
So what you're saying, so I fully understand, because sometimes it takes me a while to understand, the fact that it was rezoned to the restaurant is the rationale behind why we're here today? Not that it was closed for 30 days for COVID?
That is correct. If they wanted to continue the business, that's when that would.
Continue the business at its present state?
Correct.
Okay, because I've been in there since '82, getting my haircut. I've seen poodle parlors. I've seen everything else there. I don't recall seeing a restaurant there.
Right.
I may be wrong, but I don't.
Correct. In order to have an eating establishment, it needed to be rezoned from the residential office to the highway retail commercial.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. If I could add one last thing here is that, again, we were told that we had to have a connection to Town Water to be compliant with town code 8245, and Ms. Clarice has said that that's what it is. But the fact of the matter is, town code 8245 does not say that we have to hook to Town Water. What it says, and I quote, "Where public water supply is available in the town, it shall be unlawful to connect a residential or commercial structure to a private well." That's what the code says. That's what we've been disapproved for. That's why we've been recommended multiple times. When we go back and actually look at the code, it says it's unlawful to connect to a private well. Well, we've been connected to the same well. We're not asking to connect to a well. We don't need a waiver or a variance to connect to a well because we're already hooked to one. And we were hooked to one before the town had public water available to us. So what we're guilty of is saying yes to connecting to Town Water based upon the belief from the town planner at the time that we had to to be compliant with the town code. So if there's any moral, you know, any moral question about, you know, if we do it with you all, you know, we're going to have to bend the rules with somebody else, we're actually compliant now. The only thing we did was we said yes, we'd hook to Town Water because we were told we had to. So again, that's what the town code says, as amended municipal code as of 18 November, 2024. So we're in compliance now. The only thing we did was said, yes, we'll hook to Town Water. So I just want to add that.
Bill, can you give us a legal interpretation of that?
This property came in, as Mr. Hess said, as a result of annexation, and it was, it was served by a private well. And the time, there's been lots of discussion about who extended water. The town never pays for water. That's not how it works. All the developers, all the homes on Lumar, all up and down South Church Street, they were all paid for by developers as the developers created lots. That's how infrastructure is built. He was, they were lawfully grandfathered. We don't make, there are instances in time where we have, there have been wells, and we have not made people connect because, and in this case, the town has not extended water across the street to them. The impetus to this was the rezoning, just like Mr. Bowman inquired and as Ms. Clarice explained. It was residence office, RO. Eating establishments were not permitted there. And so that's what prompted the need for a rezoning. It wasn't the fact that the business was closed for 30 days. You can't have an eating establishment in a residential office zoning district. So they were lawfully grandfathered. As part of their application, they agreed to the connection to the water system. That's, we do have standards that say, if you connect, this is what you have to do. And so staff has taken them at their word, that they were going to connect, and then if they connect, they have to connect in a certain way. There's been a lot of discussion about the two-inch meter, all that, the two-inch connection. All that means is, when, if the connection is made into the water main, it will be a two-inch connection. It's reduced down to what is equivalent to a residential water line, and the fee they're charged for the connection, the tap fee, is not for a two-inch line, which is very, very expensive. It would be equivalent to a residential connection. So, but they, the. So, but they, the, those homes, there's, how many houses are still?
Six total.
There's six, still six homes right there that are on a water system and the town is not making them connect because we have not extended water to that area where they, and they're not required to connect. And that's the way it's been since I started here in nineteen ninety-three and it's been that way long before I got here.
I understand that conversation. I guess my question is, uh, you mentioned that, um, it was grandfathered. Were they grandfathered as RO? Or with the rezoning, when they come out of RO, does it continue to be grandfathered?
Their, their, their use was not grandfathered because that facility was not being used as a restaurant. It was a commercial facility, but it wasn't being used for a restaurant. And in order for them to use it, to, to, for their use to be approved as an eating establishment, that's what prompted the requirement to the change in zoning designation from RO to HRC.
I mean, it was a grocery store as well.
Well, but that's long before, that, all that was, the zoning ordinance, I was here when the RO zoning district was created. That was part of a lo- long time ago, a long time ago, not. Um, twenty-some years ago, we enacted an ordinance that created the RO district, residence office. It was deemed to be like a transitional zoning because it, it's very obvious that there's, there are lots of homes along there. And with the, the growth in Smithfield and the way things are changing, it was abundantly clear that things were going to be, um, there would be homes that were converted to residents. I mean, from homes converted to businesses. And that's happened. You can see the insurance companies and, uh, music studio and lots of things up in, uh, beauty parlor, all up and down the street. Um, on Church, Church Street, that's what's happened. But their use, it's, it was never an eating establishment and that's what prompted the requirement of a change in zoning classification when they wanted to put a restaurant there. So their use was not grandfathered. Their, the water system was and is. But as part of their rezoning, we typically, because it's mandated by the planning commission and the town council, when these opportunities come along, you require people to bring things up to current standards. That's why, hence the paving and hence the connection to the water. That's, that's why it was part of their application and that was part of the consideration by the planning commission and the town council when they approved the change in zoning classification.
Mr. Mayor, I have one follow-up to legal counsel, if I could.
Please.
Let's say they decide to dispose of this building now that's already now rezoned RO.
It's not zone, it's HRC.
I mean, HRC, okay. Right, okay. What happens, though, if we allow, what if they dispose of it? What if they dispose of the building along, just decide to build or, or get rid of the building? Will the next person have to be back in here applying if anyone, and they want to put restaurant in there and everything, will they have to rezone?
No, because it's already approved. That zoning follows the property, not the owner.
I understand, but what about the water issue? If we approve that, if we approve the water one way or the other?
The water issue is unresolved because the zoning requi, the current zoning requires them to connect. They are made, they've made application for a special use permit to permit them not.
And the issue is, I got you.
That's.
That's fine.
It's, it's a, it's already been approved with their commitment that they would connect and they're asking you not to require that. And that's being done by virtue of a special use permit. And parenthetically, that is the same process they went through with respect to the parking lot because they made that commitment as well. And the planning commission, that, that was, that was heard and resolved and the council approved that. But, um, they didn't make, I don't think, and to, I don't think the applicants really understood what they were doing when they made, did that. They needed, they should have filed for both and they didn't. They only filed for relief from the parking requirement and not the water. And so this is just, it, it just keeps going until it's resolved. And I assume it'll be resolved one way or the other tonight.
And to answer, our current design standards require commercial structures to have a two-inch connection. So the current design standards would require a new building to have a two-inch connection.
If it's a new building, yes.
Right, a new building and, you know, if you hit the renovation threshold, we, we go into full compliance with current design standards.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor?
Yes.
Um, this is one time I'm in support of a special use, uh, being allowed, and I, and I'll give you my rationale. Uh, number one, I, I believe they had to commit to doing this with the gun at their head. I, I, I think they had gotten into the project. Um, I also firmly believe they thought it would be a couple thousand bucks with the assumption, hey, this building's been here forever, we've got water, we don't need it because we've got this well. Little did they know, there's one little unique piece of property that's got six properties, seven properties on it that are not serviced by Town Water. And I think it's the, the town's responsibility to pretty much have water to, to a building that's been there forever. So I, I, I don't want to prolong arguing this out. Um, you know, if the water were there, i- if it were at, at their street, I'm sure that they probably would have no problem connecting, but they don't. The fact is they got to run this underneath the road to get it over to them. And I don't think they knew that and, uh, I don't think it's fair to them. Just my two cents.
Any other comments?
I just have one closing, Mayor.
Yes.
Just so, just so everyone's know, everyone knows and we're transparent, I have since metered our water. I paid for the same water bill as the guy across the street that's on city water and the same sewer. There's no difference in what I pay. I pay for every gallon that comes in that and out of that place. I'm just not drawing from the town. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Hey, gentlemen, I've listened to all that and, and be honest, a little bit confused about the timeline, so let me ask a couple of questions. In your original application, you agreed to connect.
Yes, sir.
Two years later or so, uh, during the repaving, you submitted a special use permit.
Yes, sir.
So that you did not have to pay.
Yes, sir.
And included in that, in that statement, you again agreed at that time to connect the water.
It was on the same timeline, sir. So we put both on, to be June of twenty-two, and then we asked for a waiver of the parking lot, means that we did asphalt millings. Some towns say asphalt millings are asphalt.
I'm okay, I'm okay with, with the driveway, but at, but at that time, you once again pledged.
We asked for a waiver at that point in twenty-two and it, and, yeah, and it has continued on for the last three years, yes, sir.
So what I'm hearing, and again, a little bit confused about it, part of your argument or your defense is that you feel that you're in compliant because of the new ordinance that did not take effect until your two previous agreements to connect.
I don't know what the ordinance was part of that. I'm just saying the current, the current ordinance right now, as dated November twenty twenty-four, says that, that we're compliant, essentially. We're, it's unlawful to connect to a private well if public water's available. We're not asking to connect to a private well. But we were told that to be compliant, we had to connect to Town Water and that was, that was bad information, frankly.
We didn't know.
That's, 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 no. And, and I'm not going to argue with him, but he can't misstate the law.
Right.
That's not correct. Um, the, he, he is not compliant. He is not, he is grandfathered. In other words, it was, it's a non-conforming use. It doesn't meet our current zoning standards, but we've not required him to do that. He voluntarily, and I mean he, they, the applicants voluntarily agreed to that as part of their application. But you can't say that you're in compliant because you're not. That's not true. You, and, so, so that, I don't mean to muddy the waters, but don't say something that's just not true.
The current design standards require commercial structures to have a two-inch connection, so that.
Right.
That's not in compliance.
Which is where I was going with the question.
So that, that's not necessarily a valid statement. And again, not arguing one way or the other, but just feel like it's our place to make sure it's.
Yep.
And a clarification from either you or Mrs. Clary? The planning commission and staff recommend denying it. Is that correct? Thank you.
And our, and again, staff's basis for that is ju, is that it's not in compliance with current standards.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, thank you so much for your time.
I have one, I just have one, one thing that I want to bring up one more time since this has never come up before, so this, like I said, this is new information to me. When you first got your permits, um, there were proffers. I don't know if you even remember this, Nick, this is way back then, yes.
One hundred percent.
So there were three proffers. Improve and maintain the driveway easement, accessing the rear panel, you've done that. Facilitate and volunteer use of our property to local charitable organizations.
Done that.
Do that. And, uh, repurpose and revitalization of a historic building slash structure.
And we've done that.
And you've done that. So I appreciate that. I agree with, uh, Councilman Brooks. I, I believe that this is an appropriate use of a special use permit. It's a special circumstance. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else like to speak on this matter? Yes, Tom?
You've already closed, you've closed a public hearing. You've closed a public hearing.
Okay, just questions asked. What's the will of council at this time?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the special use permit.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, Ms. Beaver-Meyer? Any other motions? If not, call for a question, please.
Vice Mayor Harris?
No.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beaver-Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
No.
Councilwoman Butler?
No.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
No.
Or three.
At this time, we have a public hearing for three thirteen Grace Street.
Mayor, Mayor Smith, before we move on, can I make a comment in reference to this discussion? And it's in reference to what Councilman Brooks', uh, uh, statement he made as far as the applicant having a gun to his head. I take offense to that and I don't want to think that any of our staff, or our staff highly qualified, maybe it was a misunderstanding, but I don't like the definition being described as us putting a gun to an applicant's head.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Bowman.
I apologize, uh, Ms. Butler. Uh, that, that phrase was actually used several, several months ago with this exact, um, with this exact situation. And I just wanted to reiterate that I'd heard that at one point and that they felt pressured.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilwoman Butler for saying that. I was going to step in and say the exact same thing. Our Public Works people do a tremendous job day in and day out and we're very supportive of a lot of things that went on there, particularly with the other SUPs that were approved. The bike path, where that confusion came from, I don't know, but the bike paths were always going to come down Lumar and not in front of the, uh, building under recent discussion. Thank you, Valerie, and, uh, thank you, Public Works. You guys do a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. At this time, um, we have a public hearing for Gray Street, three thirteen, Tammy?
Yes, thank you. The applicant is appealing the Board of Historic and Architecture Review's February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five decision. This was to deny the application for the installation of twenty-one rooftop-mounted solar panels on the single-family dwelling located at three one three Gray Street. The board believes that the solar panels are not in conformance with the historic district guidelines. Uh, the applicant does believe that they have met the criteria outlined for solar panels and have filed an appeals application, which is forwarded to town council for their review and decision. Following the staff report, I did include the section of the historic district guidelines that addresses solar panels. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on behalf of this situation? Yes, please.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Town Council, my name is Kelly Payne. I am, uh, I live at three thirteen Gray Street, a house that was built in nineteen oh nine. And that's significant because when that house was built, two-by-fours were truly two-by-fours. And it wasn't the fast wood of today. That house is built with the old, solid wood. Some people in this room have actually seen the bones of that house as we have remodeled over the years and could attest to this town council of the bones of that house. That point can come up in a little bit. So I began this process in November of twenty twenty-four when town staff told me that the Board of Historic and Architectural Review had been working on updating historic guidelines with an emphasis on solar. So when I called town planning and asked how to go about the process of applying for permission to put on solar panels, they said, basically, this is a good time because the board has currently been working on updating their guidelines specifically on solar insulation, installation. Two months later, I became, I came before the board in January of twenty twenty-five. The updated guidelines were not yet available for me to see. But the only guidance I had was from board minutes from a different homeowner's application, which had been denied by the board the previous month in December twenty twenty-four. And I would like to just read something from those minutes, and I apologize. That board member reported that if, on that project, if the panels were planned to be placed anywhere but the front of that house, he would be all forward, for it. He limited that the proposed placement was so prominent on the front of the house. So at that point, all I knew was not forward-facing. Panels were not going to be accepted if they faced the street, the front of the house facing the street. Tonight, I am solar and I will present our project to you. We'll discuss the solar guidelines that have now been approved by the board and you. Along the way, we'll catch you up on previous concerns of, from previous meetings, including holes in the roof, sagging roofs and setting precedence. I thought I had done all my homework, but the one thing I missed was contacting the town to ask for the screen to be available to show the agenda for tonight's meeting. So you're sort of stuck with me. I believe on your computers, you have it, it's just that no one else here has it. And I've got a look on my phone, hence the glasses and the delay of hitting the microphone and all those nonsense. Okay, so where this takes us to? Hold these. If you can go to what I believe is page seventy-six of one hundred and thirteen. Does everybody see that that's the picture of the front of my house?
That's, I don't think that's the same numericals that we have.
Oh, of course it wouldn't be.
That one, okay.
So what page are we on there? I'll adjust mine to, to that. Oh, oh, yay! Oh, sorry. Whoopsie. Can you tell I work with teenagers all the time?
You might be in the right place. You might be in the right place.
Oh, all right, so this is the picture of the front of my house, 313 Grace Street. As you can see, this upper roof, which is metal shingles, it looks like architectural asphalt shingles, but it is metal shingles. I applied that a couple years ago. When the previous roof painting would no longer resolve it of its issues with wear and tear, but the previous roof was stamped "metal shingles," so I replaced it with metal shingles. This front of the house is a porch. It had standing seam. I replaced that many years ago with standing seam. So like for like, like for like. But the only front-facing part of this house, this roof, is the porch. I'm not asking to put the panels on the front-facing porch. I'm asking to put them on the rooftop, which, as you can see, does not face the street. Now, the next picture is a little deceptive. You can see the side of the house, and that's where the bulk of the panels will be going. And we'll talk about the guidelines in a little bit that allow panels on the sides and the back of roofs. But this little part here is deceptive because there is a front-facing portion of that little part, but we're not putting the panels on the front-facing portion of that. It's going on the rear-facing portion of this little part. So this picture might be seen as a little deceptive. Similarly, on the other side, yes, there is a small part that is front-facing, but we're not putting the panels on the front. The panels are going on the rear-facing portion of that little part as well. And you can sort of see that then on the next picture. Now, I want to also go into one more picture. It's this picture that appears to be black and white, but it appears to show my roof as light gray and that the panels would be black on light gray. I don't know how this picture got this way because my roof is black, and I'm asking to put black panels on a black roof, not front-facing, but on the sides and back surfaces of the roof. All right, so the other thing about my house is it is three true stories tall. It's not today's stories tall. Plus, you have to go up multiple steps to even get to the first floor. That house is very tall. It is so tall that from my attic midway down Grace Street, I can see the pagan. That's how tall that house is. We joke at our family that we have water view. We're a mile and a half away.
Don't say that too loudly.
That's true. So the thought that these panels are going to be so visible from the front of the house just isn't, isn't correct, and I'm hoping I can present that to you adequately so that we all agree. Now, what I would like to do is call up Ion Solar so that they can describe to you the panels, how they'll be applied, so that we won't have leaks in this super-duper new roof and that we won't end up with a sagging roof, as appeared to be concerns at a previous discussion. And then I'll be back. Now, I'm going to try not to interject, I'm going to try to give them their time. Please don't be surprised if I don't pipe in, or if I do pipe in.
Does anyone else like to speak on this matter?
And I'll be back, we're not through.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We represent Ion Solar. We are actually the company that's doing the install for this project, and the way that these are fastened on there.
Could we get his name, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Tom Detloff, I'm the director of Virginia for the, for Ion Solar.
Your name?
Tom Detloff.
Thank you.
Yeah. But how these are installed, it's, it's fastened to the roof, and they are wind-rated for 155 mile-per-hour winds. Your normal architectural shingles are only rated for 120 to 130 mile-per-hour winds. Solar panels, when they're installed the way they're required to by code and by the city of Dominion Energy, excuse me, the company of Dominion Energy that requires the installation the way they require it, it does meet a 155-hour wind rating. We do not cause leaks on roofs, it comes with a significant roof penetration warranty as well, and we do structural engineering on 90% of every install in the state of Virginia. And we have already conducted, I don't know if I can share this with you guys or not, but a professional engineer came out, I'll read a quick few sentences. After reviewing the existing roof framing information in accordance with a structural calculation on sheet 5-5, "Which where performed according to application codes and loads above, it is my recommendation that the existing roof framing is adequate to safely and sufficiently support required structural design loads and the weight of the new solar system as is. Alteration or replacement of existing structural elements is not required." Signed by Luke Rowley, professional engineer, and he's got a stamp here, he's a certified professional engineer in the Commonwealth. So there's no liabilities on the structure at all whatsoever to cause any damage or any liability. I don't know if you guys are aware, this Ion Solar does about 300 to 400 installs every month in the state of Virginia. Over 1,000 people in the state of Virginia are having solar installed on their homes every single month. There are some guidelines and things in place that, you know, those liabilities just don't Did you guys, does anyone have any other questions for us in regards to the safety or the structure of the installation?
No one has any questions at this time. Appreciate your presentation.
No problem.
Thank you.
Does that leave anything else, Kelly?
No. I will add to him about the wind, and at least one person on Grace Street knows that the main wind that we get during a hurricane comes from the pagan. And we all learned that during Isabel when a pecan tree on my property fell on my house. But that's part of why I know how strong that roof is. If it hadn't been for a chimney that was knocked down by that tree that caused the most significant part of the damage to the house, then I never would have known how strong the bones are of that house. And when we did repair the damage that was done from those hurricane winds on the opposite side of the house than where solar is being asked to install, when we repaired, we went to a special sawmill and found old wood, not today's new wood, that was true in measurements to make all of the repairs. So that roof is incredibly strong. The other damage done by that hurricane-force wind on the other side of the house from where the solar panels will go and the tree was because a few limbs went down between joists on the first-floor kitchen. So that house has amazing bones. I am not at all concerned about a sagging roof. Now, what I'd like to do next is talk about the guidelines. So I don't know when the first guidelines were put in place, but recently, in 2025, y'all helped approve the current guidelines. But there have been guidelines for solar in the historic district for quite a few years. I just don't know how far back. But currently, in your app, in your packet, you have this, this piece of paper, and on this piece of paper, it says on page 76 of the historic district design guidelines, "Page 76 should be located on the side or rear of a building where they are less visible from the right-of-way." That's what I'm asking to put them on, the side and the rear of my house. Page 98 should be installed in such a manner that their visual impact is minimized from the right-of-way. The side and rear of a building's roof is often the most appropriate setting for solar Once again, we're going on the side and the rear. Now, while we're on this part, I don't know if any of y'all did this drive since last week, but I've done it a couple times just to be sure I was seeing what I was seeing. But if you start off on Main Street and you turn onto Grace Street, and you come up the hill and go around the corner at Kofers, everybody with me? As soon as you make that corner, you can see the side of one town council member's Just come another little bit, by the time you get to Hallwood, you can start seeing the side of another town council member's roof. Come another house or two, you can see the side of a third town council member's roof, and you still can't see mine. The side of my roof, where I'm asking to have solar installed, is blocked year-round by a giant magnolia tree in my neighbor's yard. It is not until you get past that magnolia tree, year-round, remember, magnolias are green year-round. It's not until you get past that tree that you can see my side roof. Then there is my neighbor's driveway, and then there's a similar distance because my house is not square on my lot. So where my house is, I have a flower bed and some grass, if you want to call it grass, that is about the width of my neighbor's driveway. So when you're driving on Grace Street towards my house, for only the width of two downtown driveways would these solar panels be visible on the side because of that magnolia tree, and that's year-round. Now, to have the time to look up in that sort of distance, that would mean there would have to be no other cars, and everybody would be driving at the speed that is posted. And many people in this room know that that doesn't happen. So the chances that people are going to get to that magnolia tree, look up before wrecking, y'all decide. Now, if we could go on next to this page. And I would like to start at the bottom. So these are the guidelines, in addition to those sentences that I just read you about side and back. The bottom is about avoiding, things to avoid. "Installing solar panels in locations that are visible from the street or public right-of-way, such as the primary facade of a building." So this sentence starts off talking about, basically, if you could see it from anywhere, Main Street, Route 10, anywhere. If that were the intent of that bullet, then there would have been no reason to have solar guidelines at all. Because I can't even think of a house in Smithfield where solar couldn't be seen from somewhere, one of the streets, or even the walking park, pike, walking paths at Windsor Castle. And I can't imagine that these guidelines meant that, that, that solar couldn't be seen from any right-of-way. I don't think that was the intent. But then, the way English is, funny language, it goes on to say, "such as the primary facade of a building." I'm not asking for the front, I'm asking for the side and the back. So we're good on that one. Second bullet, "We should avoid removing historic features of a building or site when installing solar panels." I'm not removing anything, so that doesn't apply. Third, "Installing solar panels in a manner that obstructs the view of historic architectural features of a building or site." I'm not obstructing anything. "Erecting ground-mounted arrays," not applicable to this project. "And installing solar panels on primary landmark buildings." This is not a primary landmark building, so it does not apply. Now, if we went up to best practices, the purple. "Solar panels should have a low profile and be mounted less than or equal to six inches above the surface of the roof." Good gentlemen of Ion Solar, these will not be more than six inches above the surface of the roof.
No, they're not.
Thank you. "Solar panels should be set at angles consistent with the slope of the supporting roof." Good gentlemen of Ion Solar, these panels will be parallel to the roof. They're not going to be set at any weird angles.
Almost exactly.
"When possible, solar panels should be hidden behind existing architectural elements, such as door moods and cross gables." The side ones aren't going to be hidden, but the back ones are on the back side. "Solar panels should be arranged in an organized configuration and blend in with the surrounding features of the historic building with respect to the color of the panels, support structures, and conduits." We're talking black on black. I can't imagine how anything is going to blend in any more than this project. "Any support structures, conduits, inverters, storage units, or other hardware should be installed on the rear of the building or areas with limited visibility from the street and the public right-of-way." or areas with limited visibility from the street and the public right-of-way." That will happen. Because my electrical stuff is on the back corner in a little nook that only people who come down my driveway can see. "Solar panels should be installed in a way that allows them to be easily removed without causing permanent damage or alteration to the building or site." It is because I have this metal roof that I consider, would even consider installing solar on this house. If I had a architectural shingle roof, at some point, solar panels would need to come down so that the roof could be replaced, and then solar panels go back up. It is my intention, by replacing at least seventy-five-year-old metal roof with the one I put on, that those solar panels aren't gonna have to come down to replace a roof. So now the top paragraph, which I view as just an overall summary. "While solar panels are a relatively modern invention, they may be installable on historic buildings under certain circumstances." They may be installed on historic buildings under certain circumstances. "As a general rule, solar panels should be installed in a location not visible from the ground or the public right-of-way." Now, that's a broad statement. But I think, from what I have discussed below and in the previous wording, that is talking about they shouldn't be installed front-facing. They should be installed side and rear-facing. "All solar panel installations within the historic district shall be reviewed by the board prior to receiving the COA." And that was done. So that leaves, that leaves one more thing that I want to talk about. But first, what questions do you have for me about this project?
I have one, Mr. Mayor. The, uh, the magnolia tree that you talk about, that obstructs anybody's view of the solar panel, I would presume that that does not have any deleterious effect whatsoever on your solar panel?
Nope, it doesn't shade my roof. If that's, if that's shaded my roof, I wouldn't need solar. I'd love to have that.
I just, just that scenario that you painted indicated to me that it was obstructing the facade of the, and I'm just wondering.
Nope, it just obstructs the view from most of Grace Street.
I'm talking about the salt, the.
Oh, I understand, yes, yes, I understand, yes. But no, it gives me no shade whatsoever. The shade from that tree stops about at their driveway.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Before we get into too much questions, it's probably worth closing, finishing the public hearing and then doing the back-and-forth dialogue. Just go through the process of the public hearing.
Okay, if no one else wants to speak, then we'll close the public hearing.
Oh, so you don't, I'm not through.
We don't, when, when?
Yeah.
You need to make sure that nobody else wants to speak on this, because I'm not sure that's, that question's gonna ask.
So I was gonna say, let her finish and then.
Yeah, if anyone else wants to speak on it. I know we've had two, three other people come up.
Well, they, they were her people.
Okay. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, can I, do you want me to finish the one little part here I have yet to go?
Sure.
Okay. I see nothing in the guidelines that this project violates. In other words, this project meets every bit of the guidelines. But I also know that no rooftop solar has been approved by the board. This would be a first. And this is over a period of at least two sets of these guidelines. I have no idea how many people have come before the board asking for solar. I know of one that was denied because it was front-facing. If there is no intent to approve a project that meets the guidelines, why were they developed and then revised and then approved? Further, as to this appeal, I was hesitant to do this appeal because I suspected the appeal process might be similar to the guidelines process. Because it appears the guidelines were developed with never an intent of ever being approved for use. So my thought was, well, there's this appeals process with you. But if that's another set of rules that were written at taxpayer expense, just like the guidelines, but there's never any intent or success with this appeals process, why would I go through with that? So I did my homework. I contacted the town and said, "Has anyone ever appealed a board decision and had it reversed?" And the answer was yes. So you would not be setting precedents by allowing this, this project to move forward. I don't know if, if it's only one, or if it's more than one time. I don't know anything about that project. I know it was before your time, but that's all I know. But the precedence has already been set. The town council can override a board decision. Okay, so, last thing about precedents. Smithfield's recently-approved guidelines on solar are based on Arlington, Virginia's guidelines, the historic sections in Arlington, Virginia. Their guidelines have been approved, were approved in 2015. Smithfield basically copied and modified those. It seemed from the board that there was a real concern that by approving my project, it would open the floodgates to solar in Smithfield. So I said, "Well, what happened in Arlington?" Would you like to know? Arlington approved their solar guidelines, which ours mimic, in 2015. Five projects have been approved in Arlington's historic district in ten years. So it's not like every house in Smithfield is gonna have solar if you approve this project. If the good people of Arlington, with much more money than the good people of Smithfield, in general, I'm guessing, are not asking to put solar on their houses in the historic district, I doubt that it's gonna open the floodgates here. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to come forward to speak on this matter? If not, I'd like to close the public hearing. I would like to remind council, this is a BHA appeal. So we're looking for guidance. What is the will of council at this time?
Question, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Stallings, was there any substance provided for the denial by BHA? Did they have include a write-up that said their justification for denial?
He wasn't there. Um, I was. The, um, and just so you know, there was, there was a previous application, and I'm just giving you some context, Mr. Cullum. But there was a previous application. It was, I believe it's back over on Riverview in, in that area of town. And it was a house with a different roof line, and they proposed installation on the roof that faced the, um, the house. But that was before the guidelines were lifted. And, um, every application had, it, it wasn't on a major thoroughfare. And so that, it was a different scenario. But Ms. Payne was, she did make her application, and she agreed that because the new guidelines have not been adopted, they, they, um, continued the case for a month so that those could be considered in making a decision about this. And the, and I think you could read the minutes, but I believe that the basis for denial was the fact that, um, it can be seen from the, from the street. And that, and then it says, that guideline, it says, "Avoid installing them when they can be seen from the right-of-way or from the street." And that was the primary, it was a split vote on that. But that was the primary consideration that it, that based, um, she puts great stock in, and I'm not gonna argue with her, but she puts great stock in her argument that it's not front-facing. That wasn't the concern, and that wasn't the criteria that was considered. It was that the fact that they could be seen from the right-of-way. And that was, I believe, if you read the minutes, you would see that was the primary discussion about that. But again, it was a split vote.
Mr. Cullum, Ms. Clary does have the minutes. I don't know if there's anything in there that.
Um, I can just add that the concern was approving that something would be seen from the street, and it would show that the board was willing to not follow their own guidelines as written. There was concern about the amount of panels that would be visible. However, if the board was going to allow solar panels in the historic district, the applicants had done everything that they had asked to minimize the panel's appearance in a way that made them workable. There was also discussion about how there had been much consideration on the placement of trying to hide the panels as much as was feasible, and that they did not think that it would be a dominant feature of the house. There were mixed feelings on the matter. But they felt, one member felt that they had met all the requirements that had been put in place. There was a question about consulting with a structural engineer for the project. And there was concern about the roof's ability to hold the weight of the solar panels based on the way the house was framed due to, due to its age, and advised that they may want to have it checked out in case there was a chance the roof might sink. Thank you.
Again, I think it's worth noting that it, it was a tab vote, so it failed because of that.
Any other further discussion, Mr. Cullum?
No, sir.
Yeah, Mayor, I do have a couple comments. I'm fortunate enough to live on Grace Street, and probably unfortunately for Ms. Payne, I live diagonal from her. And I, I want to go back to the "avoid" section. "Installing solar panels in locations that are visible from the street or public right-of-way." The front side is extremely visible from the street. And I, I think there's like thirteen-some-odd panels on that one. It's pretty much the, the whole roof line. If we took the time to actually get these, the, these rules and regulations and, and went through BHA and it was studied, and we, and we all blessed it, and we looked at revisions, and we did some text changes, and we did all this, and we went through all that process and just approved it back in, I think, January, this is glaringly not in accordance with what we have put forth. And, uh, I, I just, for the heck of it, when I saw that this was coming up to BHA, I took a picture just out of my front window. And I, I'm not say, I'm not opposed to this because it's me, and it's, that's the view I'm looking at. It, it has really nothing to do with me. But as we know, the Grange is gonna get developed at some point, and that is a massive thoroughfare, especially when the bridge gets reopened. And it, it, it's pretty glaring. And I really couldn't think of a worse place to put it on the house, unfortunately.
Any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I have no question with the science at all. Hearing from a wonderful scientist in her own right, or the structural, or how much electricity it may or may not generate, that is not, you know, germane to our decision. I do have to agree with Councilman Brooks that the, that side roof is extremely visible on the street, perhaps not for cars coming down on the inside lane. But Grace Street is our most walked street by our visitors. And as a historian preservationist, I think it's incredibly important that we do everything we can to maintain the historical integrity of our downtown historic area. The National Trust for Historic Preservation actually has written an article in combination with two or three different solar companies. And their recommendations are as the second sentence and the, and the little yellow panel that Kelly drew our attention to. "Solar panels should be installed in a location not visible from the ground or the public right-of-way." And as our visitors are walking up and down Grace Street, they will be seeing that, pretty much staring them in the, in the face. And I really tried to make this go away with the magnolia tree. But Councilman Bowman kinda, you know, drew our attention to that. If it gets sick and cut down at any time in the future, then we have a reflective solar panel in the middle of what makes Smithfield, Smithfield. I actually wrote down one of the phrases that Lee Abbott used earlier today. You know, one of the responsibilities of council is to protect our historical setting and our cultural climate. We bill ourselves as historic Smithfield. It's a great attraction. It's one of the things that tourism makes a great use of. Our street is constantly, particularly in spring and summer, visited by foot traffic. So my concern is not science, certainly not financial. My concern is the purity of the historic district. Once we begin this, we dilute the history a little bit more. We've already lost significant historical structures in Pierceville and Barnes and other historical buildings over the, over the years. We received our historical designation, national, in nineteen-seventy-three, right? And our first historical guidelines for the town were two thousand and six, I believe. We've lost about thirty buildings already. We cannot continue to dilute what makes us special. And in my opinion, allowing such a piece of glaring solarware in our downtown historical district would be detrimental both in the short and long term.
Any other discussion?
I have a question for staff. The difference between a landmark, uh, property and a contributing one, is that based on how old it is? Or there's a line in the sand that if it's built after a certain time? My question, I mean, if it's, okay, if it's built after, pick a number, nineteen-twenty-five, it's one way. If it's, or nineteen-hundred, whatever. Do you have an answer in that, Tammy?
So in our zoning ordinance, "Structures from eighteenth-century to pre-Civil War or structures with architectural significance from the period after the Civil War shall be considered as landmarks or landmark structures. Properties designated as properties which contribute to the historic character of the town but which do not contain landmark structures shall be known as contributing properties. Properties designated non-contributing or vacant lots or those which feature a primary building with one or more of the following features."
building with one or more of the following features: less than 50 years of age, alterations to such an extent that it is no longer representative of the period in which it was constructed, degradation to such a poor condition that preservation is difficult. It is, it does not have any sort of architectural style and has no architectural merit. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So even though this house, I'm assuming early 1900s is what a lot of the houses on Gray Street are, some are older. So technically, and it is, I mean, it's listed as a contributing one, so whatever, however the age is, it still is in the historic district. And my concern is in the part, in the guidelines when it says, solar panels should be installed in a location not visible from the ground or the public right of way. And like Vice Mayor Harris said, if you're walking on the sidewalk, these are visible. It's unrealistic to think that if you're only standing in front of the house, then they're not visible. That's somehow you had to get to in front of the house. So you're either walking or driving, you know, and it is a very walkable area. So I think that's, that's my concern here is that it is visible and it is, and it's easily, easily visible from the sidewalk. And even, matter of fact, even on one of the pictures that they showed us, the side view is taken from the side, from the sidewalk. And you can see the panels right there. It's not obstructed by the tree, the tree is not there. So it's taken from the, it looks like the sidewalk where the picture is taken from. So those are, those are my concerns.
Any more questions? If not, what was the will of counsel on this appeal, ma'am? No, ma'am.
I have a question, Mayor Smith. Tammy, when these guidelines were written, were they written by staff in conjunction with BHAR as well?
Can I speak to that as, I'm on BHAR. So I, because Tammy and I maybe weren't at the meetings, that's the reason they're asking me, so I never wanted to comment close. I wasn't present at the...
No, I'd like for Tammy to address this, please.
So when we were addressing the solar panels, we provided the BHAR with various things that other localities had used in their design standards. This was the one that most likely, was most representative of what the BHAR wanted to see in our guidelines and so that is what we asked the consultants to include.
So we had solar guidelines prior to this in the historic district?
I believe it was very minimal, just lumped in with like mechanical equipment.
Any questions for Tammy this time?
Thank you.
Once again, I'm asking for the will of counsel on this matter of appeal.
Mr. Mayor, I've taken into consideration the wonderful testimony that Ms. Payne did provide. She's gone to extreme significant depths to lay out her case. She did a great job there. That being said, I'm struck by the fact that how unique this area is. I've lived here since 1982. And again, this is a scenario where we'd love to do, make people happy, but at the same time, sometimes we have to make difficult decisions. I do think by virtue of the diagrams that have been provided to us, I didn't see quite what she was describing to me as the panels being out of the way. I saw if you're walking down the sidewalk, what I would look up. And one of the things that I did when I spoke to a group that was at Smithfield Center a couple of weeks ago that was in town, I said, you know, when you're walking down Church Street, make sure you take time to look up. Look closely, look at the design, the stained glass and things like that. So in light of all the testimony, and it's been good testimony this evening, I'd like to make a motion that we uphold the Bureau, or the Board of Historic and Architectural Resources' decision.
To deny. Their decision, just so I can clarify this, it was a split decision.
It's a split decision.
And it was not approved and so this is essentially a trial de novo. So you are making a decision.
Okay, then that's fine.
Yes or no?
Motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Madam Beeper Meyer. Any other further discussion? If not, call for the question.
Councilman Brooks?
No.
No is a no to, his motion is to deny.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beeper Meyer?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
No, and my vote is based on the guidelines where it says 2025 historic district design guidelines. They're subjective and I vote no.
Mayor Smith?
Motion passes to deny. Next is a public hearing on the text amendment. Ms. Clary?
Yes, thank you. This application was favorably recommended to the Town Council by the Planning Commission. It's a proposed text amendment to Article 13 of the zoning ordinance. This is just to bring the definitions that are listed in Article 13 in line with the newly adopted Article 3P for the Chesapeake Bay preservation overlay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clary. I'd like to open a public hearing. Anyone have any questions, like to come forward on this matter? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Do we need a motion for this bill?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Need a motion to accept the text amendment to Article 13 of the zoning ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept text amendment to Article 13 of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, call for the question, please.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beeper Meyer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Next, we have, on agenda is not a public hearing, but it's a blighted property on McGruder Road. Ms. Clary, can you speak to that matter, please?
Yes, the town of Smithfield received a complaint concerning the partially burned down structure. This is located at 1502 McGruder Road. Staff did send a notice on January 29th, 2025, requesting an update on the cleanup and repair of the structure within 30 days in accordance with our Town Code Section 22-2B1. A plan was provided as requested. In accordance, town staff do request that Town Council review this plan. We did include Town Code for reference and we also have some images as well. Thank you.
And in front of everybody today was a letter we received today from the property owner's attorney as well. It was emailed out today as well as paper copies. That was news since Council PAC was distributed.
Mr. Mayor, if, last week at the committee meetings, you instructed me to contact the attorney from the property owner and this Mr. Small, he's present tonight with the, with his owner, I believe. But just to summarize, the letter that was previously received dated February 28th, that was, for lack of a better term, deemed to be the plan that was received in response to Ms. Clary's notice. And it basically said that it was going to be a matter of relying on the insurance company to approve a claim and then remove the property. I called Mr. Small and he picked up the phone right away and we had a nice discussion about this. But my advice to him was that that was not a plan that would be accepted by the Town Council and that tonight, this matter was on your agenda for tonight. I had mentioned to him the fact, and as we had discussed, the fact that the property is insecure, unsecured and that a fence at the very minimum should be erected. And he said he would talk to his client about that. But there, I did advise him that this was, that his plan was not accepted. He said he would get back to me on Friday. I did not hear from him. I called him myself today and once again, he was very responsive about this and he immediately got this letter back to me. But there is no timeline for removal. The only timeline specified in this letter is for the installation of the fence that, he says Rosenbaum Fence is going to install and that would be by April 18th, 2025. So you can hear from him if you like. If they deem this to be their revised plan, it's up to the Town Council to determine if this is an acceptable plan. If it's not an acceptable plan, or do you want to give them more time? You have options here, but he is, he is here if you want to hear from the...
Yes, I would like for Mr. Small to come up, please. Thank you for your patience. I know you've been here a while.
Oh, that's fine. We appreciate your time and consideration in this matter. First, Lenny and Chrissy Harris, the homeowners, are here. I'm their attorney. I've worked with Lenny and Chrissy on multiple matters, but when the house burned down, just so the council knows, they were in the process of finishing renovations and it was listed for sale. They left one evening, the fire happened during the night, it was a total loss, so they were devastated. Fortunately, they had homeowners insurance and they turned it over to their homeowners' insurance carrier immediately. They've cooperated completely with the fire department, Virginia State Police, and their homeowners insurance carrier. And I would point out that this fire happened at the end of October. When we got the letter, when they got the letter January 29th, they did turn it over to me to respond to this town. And during that time was also the holiday period. The insurance company started making requests for information from Lenny and Chrissy almost immediately and they have cooperated 100%. The most recent request was a letter from the insurance company's attorney with approximately 24 separate things that they wanted from the Harrises in preparation for a sworn statement under oath for that attorney, which is now scheduled for April 14th. So suffice it to say that the insurance company is still investigating their claim. Therefore, had the Harrises wanted to remove anything from the property up to now, they could not do so because they would risk all of the homeowners' insurance. And right now, their homeowners' insurance would cover somewhere over $600,000 of the loss. So they're stuck in an unfortunate situation where, for whatever reason, their insurance company is continuing to demand information. I personally think that this claim should have been settled long ago and the property should have been cleared. But again, if they don't comply with every part of that insurance policy, they will give an excuse to the insurance company to deny the claim regardless. And we can't allow that to happen. So when we got the letter from the town, I was fortunate enough to call Ms. Clary and talk with her about it and I explained to her the situation with regard to the insurance. I told her then that our purpose and plan was they have coverage under their policy to clear the property. And at that time, we thought we were near the end of the process. And I told her in the letter that I wrote to her that, based on her conversation with me as staff, that I thought advising you all that there was a plan in place where we would have insurance cover the removal would be sufficient. And I asked to be notified if it wasn't. And Mr. Riddick was kind enough to call me about a week ago and bring up the concern about the security of the property in the interim. So the reality of the situation is that the Harrises have been put in a very difficult position they don't want to be in. So when Mr. Riddick and I had our conversation, the discussion came up about putting up a fence. Immediately, I relayed that to the Harrises. They agreed. They immediately started contacting fence companies and Rosenbaum Fence, as I pointed out in my letter to Mr. Riddick today, is one of the most well-respected fence companies in the area. And they have agreed to install the fence. They know time is of the essence. They've agreed to do it no later than April 18th and sooner if they can. What I would ask the council to do tonight is to approve the plan, which would be to install a security fence, post no trespassing signs on the fence, and then allow the insurance claim to be completed before any further destruction of the property. Because if the town takes its authority as a blighted property and moves in to destroy the structure, before the homeowners' insurance claim is resolved, you will deny the Harrises, in my opinion, the right to recover under their homeowners' policy. I don't think that's what blighted structure is intended to do. The property has not been ignored. The property, I mean, the fact that it was a total loss is devastating to them emotionally too, because it was a home in which Mr. Harris's parents lived. And I don't believe it's been totally unoccupied for 10 years. But the reality of the situation is, we know that it's not a pretty thing to look at by any means. And if I was a neighbor, I'd want it cleaned up as fast as possible as well. But as a neighbor, I would also understand that if someone's insurance company is not cooperating with them and wants to drag them through every possible loophole or part of the policy before they'll approve it, then I would hope as a neighbor, I would understand that. So what we would ask tonight is that you would approve the plan. And the plan is now, in consultation with Mr. Riddick's suggestion and concern, that I think you raised, Mr. Mayor, about possible security of the property, that we will install a six-foot-high security fence surrounding the destroyed part of the property and we will move forward to press the insurance company to resolve the claim and get it cleaned up. It has only been five months since the fire. In my many years as an attorney, this is the first time I've ever seen an insurance company give somebody in a homeowner's situation as difficult a time to recover under the policy. And to date, the insurance company has not given us any reason why they're not paying on the policy, or they're not covering their obligations under the policy, except to continue to demand information from the Harrises. Unfortunately, the way the insurance policy is written, if the Harrises don't cooperate, they won't get any coverage. Unfortunately, if the town were to take action to further destroy or remove the blighted property, their insurance will not cover them. So we would ask the Town Council to understand, you know, they love Smithfield, they love the house, they were hoping to sell it and do well with it. And God knows, when it burned down, it destroyed them. But they, I can assure you as their attorney, that they are doing everything possible to get this mess cleaned up. And they fully understand, as a neighbor, that it's not pleasant to look at or be around. And based on my discussion with Mr. Riddick, we also understand the security issue, which is a concern. I would point out, however, that there's never been a security issue that we know of on the property. And they had posted no trespassing signs at one point without a fence, but we haven't had a security issue to date and now we're going to install a fence to make sure we don't. And again, I never heard back from my letter to staff suggesting that the plan I proposed to have the insurance company pay would be sufficient until I heard from Mr. Riddick. And he was kind enough to take time to discuss your concerns and we didn't argue with concern. It hadn't crossed our minds to install a fence, quite honestly, until it was raised. But once it was raised, it made sense to do. And in order to preserve their right to go after their insurance coverage and to have the town have security over the property, we would ask you tonight to approve the plan, which was in our original letter, of working with the insurance company for the coverage and then secondarily, in the additional letter, to require the fence be installed on or before April 18th. a six-foot-high security fence around the property. And we would urge the council not to take further steps under your blighted property ordinance to take the property out of the control of the Harrises, because I'm afraid once you do, their insurance coverage will be canceled. Thank you. I'll answer any questions.
Mr. Mayor, question please?
Yes, sir, please.
Mr. Small, thank you for being with us. I, too, am a neighbor, live about seven houses down. So I, I get a chance to, to see what's going on over there. I guess the question I've got is that you are asking the council not to move forward with the blighted property proposal or ordinance that we have. Is that correct?
Well.
Well, let me follow that up. Would you agree or disagree that if we were to take that action this evening and you would forward that to the insurance company? That might cause them to get a little pep in their step and move along?
I think it would have the opposite effect. I think that, I think they would use it to their advantage to decline coverage under the policy.
Well, which begs the question. You indicated just a second ago that no idea what's causing so long and 24. Has there been any, any finding whatsoever from the investigating entities as to what occurred, which would give us pause to make it think, make us think that maybe there is going to be a remedy coming soon?
The, my answer would be this. The fire department reports do not indicate the location of the fire, but the Harrises were told that the location of the fire was presumed to start on the back wall of the living room sometime during the night. During the fire suppression, they had to take down a wall. And it's my understanding that that wall impacted the ability of investigators. But I have talked with the Virginia State Police investigator. And as of now, there is, to my knowledge, no information that there's anything untoward about this fire other than it occurred. In other words, that, that the Harrises are not claimed to be responsible for the fire. Now.
Just wondering when maybe we could get a decision that would move things along. Because again, Mr. Lavengood just built a brand-new home right next door. And yeah, that kind of, and under the blighted statute or the ordinance that we have, that takes into consideration that very, very scenario.
Sure. And what I would say is this. We are supposed to do sworn statements with their attorney April 14th. I don't know of anything, I haven't memorized the policy. But we've already gone through the step of dealing with the initial adjuster. We've already gone through the step of giving statements to the secondary adjuster. Now, they've turned it over to their attorney. And yesterday, I drove, hand-delivered to Richmond, a three-inch, a three-inch notebook full of material and questions they had about the Harrises, including wanting to know their entire net worth.
That, that's.
Right. But the only reason I say that is, we have given them every shred of information they've asked for. I'm hoping that after we do the sworn statements, April 14th, that a decision will quickly follow from the insurance company.
Okay.
Okay? And so what I would say is, I don't deny that it's, that it's a blighted property in the sense that it's a terrible eyesore. And I, and I, I understand as a neighbor that it's a terrible thing to look at. But I also would suggest that the Harrises are not totally responsible for it. They can't go in and tear it down until the insurance company is satisfied. So in other words, the solution would be, tell the Harrises to go get their money and clean it up. And then wait till the insurance company rebuilds. They can't clean it up if the insurance company is still asking questions about the coverage under the policy. So respectfully, I thought Mr. Riddick's suggestion about installing a fence temporarily made sense. And what I would ask you to do, if you would, in order to push the insurance company along, is approve the plan that we, that I presented tonight, including the installation of the fence, and set this out for 90 days with council. Because then I can tell the insurance company that if we don't get something done, it is going to be declared a blighted property and we're going to have to go after it.
Well, the concern I have is this, is Mr. Riddick did do a great job as a member of our staff, by the way, notifying you of what needed to be done. And the stopgap measure that he provided is, is one step along the way of securing the property. Mr. Riddick, if we just declare this a blighted property, how many days do we have before we undertake action? Is it 90 days?
Yeah. Yes, but I would, I would like to suggest.
Please do.
That we adjourn for a closed session to discuss legal matters, because I need to advise town council on this matter, because this is, this requires legal advice. And I think a five-minute or 10-minute closed session would be an appropriate thing to do right now.
Okay, Mrs. Small, give us a few minutes.
As a lawyer, I can't object to that.
All right. Need a motion to go to a closed session?
I make a motion that we enter into closed session to discuss legal matters with council.
I second that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harris, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we reconvene normal session and certify that nothing other than those matters deemed to be appropriately discussed with legal matters were discussed in closed session.
Second. Do we have a motion? And we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, Mr. Riddick, I would like for you to advise us about how we need to proceed with this.
Mr. Mayor, based on our discussion, I'd like to recommend that the town council adopt the following resolution, that the council would defer action on this pending matter concerning the blighted property of 1502 McGruder Road, provided, however, that the owner will agree to the erection of the fence as proposed, to include the damaged structure, the debris field, and the swimming pool. And further, that the town shall be received and be copied on correspondence from the owner's legal counsel to the insurance company, advising them of the current status of this action pending before the town council, and the urgent nature that is...
Attached to it.
Attached to it by the council.
Yes, and the answer to both of those is yes. And in fact, Mr. Harris, one of the things that he made certain of at my request was that the fence will go completely around the property. I understand there's a back deck that was not damaged by the fire, but you could possibly access the debris field from there, so the fence will actually go across the back deck that's not damaged, so that the entire debris field, the pool, and the house are encircled.
We have a recommendation, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt said recommendation, as explained by council for the town, and also agreed to by council for the respondent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, further discussion about this? There is some concerns about time limits and so forth?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think we just need also some... That they have an actual plan at the end, if necessary, if moves into a blighted, like a fence is not a plan.
And we had conversations about this too, Mr. Small, and basically, the concern from council is that if you're going to submit a plan, we want more of a plan, not that the insurance company is going to handle it, we need to know, to the greatest degree possible, what your plan, once the claim is approved, what your plan will be with respect to the property.
Yes.
Okay, and you can take that as you will, but we want...
Let me address it just briefly, and I understand your concern about the timeline. What we are hopeful of is that the sworn statement session is set for April 14th, and at the end of that, we would hope that a decision with regard to the insurance coverage would not be long after. But, what I would, in accord with what you recommended, Mr. Riddick, I will advise Mr. Riddick about that. I know that ultimately, of course, if the insurance claim is denied, then they will have to figure out a way to deal with the blighted property and return it, at least clear it, before they can do anything else. So, we appreciate the council's deference to allow us to at least exhaust the insurance coverage issue, but I would say that we would report back to council within 60 days.
We're... We've... The motion was to... This is, we're deferring action until May, with the...
Oh, okay.
With the idea that we're going to hear something, you're going to put that fence up, and we're going to hear at least a status report.
In May, that's fine.
And May means the town council date of May?
Yeah.
Which would be the first Tuesday of May?
That would be fine. By then, we should know more from the insurance company because of the sworn statements being concluded, and the fence should be erected. So, I'm happy to come back and make a report to council at that time.
We straight on the motion?
Mr. Mayor, is it open to this conference session?
No.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment, sir, before we walk off. Just a point of clarity for me?
Yes.
In the last sentence of your second paragraph in the letter, you're going to... Fire damage portion will be surrounded at the above address pending conclusion of the insurance claim. Later in that same letter, you say that the fence will be up on or before, no later than April 18th, 2/25.
Yes.
Are you going to... Sounds to me that there's a little confusion there.
Oh, no, the second... What we're saying is that the fence will be installed no later than April 18th. Rosenbaum Fence knows we want it done as soon as possible. But what I'm also saying is that the fence will remain in place until the insurance claim is resolved, because the insurance claim, if it's resolved the way it should be, will cover the cost of the debris field at cleanup. And so, we will not remove the fence until the property is cleared. In other words, it'll stay up, they'll work on it, it'll have a gate, so that they can work and clear, but the fence will not come down until it's been completely cleared. In fact, the contract for the fence has to be for a minimum of a year, believe it or not, for this type of fencing, it's either six months or a year. And rather than go with a six-month contractor who couldn't guarantee when the work would be done, we paid more to go to Rosenbaum Fence because of their reputation and that they would guarantee it's up by the April 18th. So, the fence has been purchased for a year. It won't take that long, obviously, but I didn't mean to imply that the fence would be coming down then, it's going up before then, and it'll remain in place until the property is cleared. And obviously, once the clearing is approved by the insurance company and it starts, we'd be happy to consult with Ms. Clary to make sure that the clearing meets the requirements that the town might have.
Does anyone want to understand this? Any other questions?
Have a motion on the floor that needs a second?
Yep, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Cutler, any other discussion? If not, call for the question.
Councilman Bowman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just make a comment to Mr. Small, I hope you understand from what you've heard tonight, Mr. Small, that this is going to be something that's going to be on their agenda and consideration every month, until this thing gets resolved.
I fully understand that, and I want the council to understand, too, the Harrisons are distraught over this whole situation, and they would prefer that it not be the way it is, so I don't want them to... But, I will promise to be at every council meeting until it's resolved, and in between to answer any questions Mr. Riddick may have. And if I have any significant information in between council meetings, I'll be happy to correspond with him and let him know. And the happiest day of my life will be when I write the letter saying the claim has been approved.
And if I have any concerns from the neighbors, I'll be glad to forward them to Mr. Riddick, so you can...
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Small.
No, yeah, absolutely.
Good sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we need approval on the minutes, summary match?
Just, Mr. Pitt's name has got an S on it, so there are a few paragraphs on it here, but I revised the minutes and corrected them and recommend they be approved as revised and corrected.
Okay. Have a motion for the...
Yep, I make a motion to approve the minutes as revised.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call for the question?
Councilman Cutler?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Yes.
Councilman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Biebermeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. And we have new business? Anybody have any new business you want to discuss? If not, we have old business. Any other old business? If not, thank you all for coming out, meeting adjourned.
Steve, you threw out an aye. You threw out an aye instead of a yes.
Every once in a while. That's probably because I'm a...
I thought that was an "I am ready to get out the door."
Aye, aye, sir.